No, it's not. And I'm gonna find my agenda.
I have another one if you need it?
Yeah, I might. I found it. Thanks. Okay, are you ready then?
Yes.
We'll call the meeting to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall. That copy is slightly outdated. There's a fully updated copy up here on the corner. We've ordered apparently a new poster-sized one, but it's not here yet. But there is an exact open meeting law up here on the corner. So feel free to get one if you need one. We'll have roll call.
Harris.
Here.
Knapper.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Reisig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
All right, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unafraid, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just want to mention a couple things, similar reminders. We want to welcome everyone here. We want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. And because of that, we need to remember that whoever would like to speak this evening, be sure that you come forward when you're recognized. State your name for the record into the microphone and spell your name, which assists the county clerk in doing her minutes. Remind you, there's no swearing or other inappropriate language. We all need to check our cell phones, including myself, and turn them off or to silent. Also want to remind the commissioners to try and be sure and speak into the microphones so that the recording of the meetings can be heard well from what we're saying as well as the public. Somewhere, when I decide that it's about midway in the meeting, we will plan to take a break. And normally, I like to call it an eight-minute break, and then we'll try and come right back so that we can proceed with the meeting. I haven't been mentioning this every time, but tonight, we have actually our county attorney, Dave Ubanks, is here. We also have our attorney that helps us with civil affairs, Jason Ocean, that represents us as well. So I'll just mention that. Okay, so I think that concludes that item. The next one is approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. Kelly?
I would like to have under Board of Equalization, if we could remove the from board, report of destroyed real property for Viola removed. The property owner was not able to allow the assessor's office for their review of the property.
And that's all that you have? Any others? Do we have a motion to that effect?
No. Oh, could we?
Yeah, I know. Could we get a motion to that effect?
I move that we approve the agenda with the noted item, the Viola property being removed from the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the one item taken off. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motions carried. Just note of interest here, the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. We refer to that as an executive session many times. We do not have an executive session on the back like we sometimes do, but we certainly reserve the right to go into executive session anytime that we feel that it's appropriate or needed. And normally, that's confirmed by our attorney, Mr. Ocean. But we don't have any of those scheduled as of tonight. Moving down the agenda, the next item is the consent agenda, which is intended to be one action for all of the items listed by one action unless one of the commissioners would like to consider one of those separately. And tonight, I want to mention at least one before we end up with a motion, and that's we have a set of minutes. It was from when we did the Board of Equalization. This was the 1:00 PM meeting, June 17th. And in any event, we had several motions.
I thought it was, excuse me, I thought it was on the 27th is what I corrected with that vote. You don't have the 27th?
I have the 27th.
I have 27th up here.
Yes. We've had protests.
These minutes for approval may have been for the 27th meeting, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
All right.
And I have the correction on the screen.
Okay, so the primary issue is this line item that Kelly has. Mr. Nelson, Chris Nelson, was here, and we had several motions on his piece of property valuations. I think the first four motions died for lack of second or else the motion failed. But the very last one was for 640 or 674,000. And the minutes reflect that that motion failed for lack of second, but actually, that motion was seconded and passed.
So the correction reads, the roll call was yays, Harris, Knapper, Blue, and nays were Reisig and Meyer.
Okay. All right, so we want to just be sure and get those minutes straight. Is there any other items? And if not, I'll offer a motion that would include this. All right, hearing none, my motion would be to approve the consent agenda as presented to us with the exception of this line item for the minutes that was the minutes dated as of the June 27th meeting for the Nelson valuation of 674,000, and the motion did carry.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
That's going to be tied into the consent.
Into the motion.
Into the consent agenda.
Right. All in one, and that was Jason gave us.
Somewhat of an okay.
You're asking for the consent agenda to be approved right now?
The consent with that change.
I didn't get that.
All right. So any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motions carried. Okay, next item is Board of Equalization, and we're going to need a motion to go into the Board of Equalization. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to go into the Board of Equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motions carried. So we're in the Board of Equalization. First item is to discuss and consider approval of three motor vehicle exemptions for Regional West Medical Centers got.
Heather? Tonight, I have three motor vehicle exemptions for Regional West. I believe only one of these is a new vehicle. The other two are vehicles that they missed in their January renewals. The total tax loss for these three vehicles is $1,036.20. It says all motor vehicles are used for the daily operations of the nonprofit hospital, Regional West Medical Center. Vehicles are used for the purpose of transporting patients, lab testing products, supplies, employees, and more between facilities and other locations within the regional operating area.
So are these, would you consider these new or not?
Two of them are renewals that they missed in January. They had some change in management over there, and apparently, they missed a couple, and one is a new vehicle. I believe the new one's a 2024 Ford Explorer. And they all have the same use listed.
Any questions? Comments? Entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the tax exemptions for those three vehicles for Regional West Medical Center.
Is there a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the three motor vehicle exemptions for Regional West Medical Center. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motions carried. Next item is discuss and consider approval of report of destroyed real property. So this is parcel number 010331484, last name is Williams.
Yes, sir. This is one's pretty straightforward. They had one building located on the property, and it was destroyed by high winds. We went out and verified the buildings going. Our recommendation is to remove the site improvements from their value, which is $5,555. And leave the land as is. It would be a value loss of the $5,555 and a tax loss of around $75.
Is there any anyone here this evening to discuss this item otherwise? Hearing none, any comments from the commissioners? You did a field review, so you verified what they're saying. And yeah, we have pictures of part of that, too. All right. So do we have a motion to approve the destroyed real property? Damaged real property Form 425 on this property?
I move that we approve the reported destroyed real property for the Williams property.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motions carried. I will go to the next one, discuss and consider approval of report of destroyed real property, parcel 010007202 for Lethler.
This one, she had a couple of buildings destroyed on her property due to the high winds again. I provided you a breakdown. She has several buildings. The two that are highlighted in yellow are the two that were damaged and destroyed. And so our recommendation is just remove the value of those two buildings, which totals The total value left on the property would be 547,231.
What was the original value of it?
567,516.
So the loss is $20,285.
Yes, sir.
And same story, you've done a field review of this, and we have pictures, I see. Any other, is there anyone here to comment on this item tonight?
Will they be coming before the board during protests, or this is a settled amount?
In this property, it's a settled amount, but she has other protests.
And she was okay with the, what's the number that you gave her?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the commissioners? Let's see, do we, you have a motion yet? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the damaged real property report.
I move that we approve the reported destroyed property for the Lethler building.
And that's $20,285 value loss on that one.
Value loss, yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the damaged real property report. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, the motion's carried. Okay, so then we're removing the one for Viola. Then we're going to discuss and consider approval of exemption application for new property purchased by Region One Office of Human Development.
Sir, good evening. As Mr. Harris indicated, Region One Office of Human Development has purchased a new property between January 1 and July 1, which allows them to apply for an exemption for this year and meets the criteria. The property is being, is going to be used as a residential home for individual developmental disabilities. They have a number of, number of other properties. I've made my recommendation on the Form 451 that you should have in front of you. Real property totaled $102,575, personal property $10,000. So I recommend the board approve it for the tax year 2025.
Is there anyone else that's here this evening to speak on this item? All right, if not, we'll go to questions from commissioners?
Where's that locator, Robert?
It is 104 Springs Valley Lane in Garing.
They've been using that house for, they've been renting the house for that use, how they just purchased it.
They purchased it and then applied in June for the exemption.
I make the motion for approval.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for to approve the exemption application for Region One Office of Human Development. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motions carried.
That was the reason on the Viola one. I remember she was in here, that's the one where the baseball was.
They had to reschedule, come here from wrong, Steve, but they had to reschedule their, they had a basement issue, they had groundwater intrusion.
Yeah.
And they had the protest, but they couldn't meet us at a designated time and date that we'd set up. We had to postpone it, hence pull it from today's agenda, and hopefully, it will show up on our next agenda.
Okay, so we'll come back around either.
We do anticipate that.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion to come out of the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of Equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motions carried. All right, so we'll, we're out of Board of Equalization, we'll go on to the general agenda items. The first item is the audit presentation. Kevin Sylvester from Dana Cole is here.
Is it that time of year again?
Didn't we just did that?
Evidently, he's here.
Didn't we just do this?
He like it comes around fast. By the way, Kevin, they're all here to hear your presentation, so everybody that's in the house, make it a good one. I'm sure they did.
I am Kevin Sylvester with Dana Cole and Company. We've been doing the audit for, hey, financial audit for a while now, probably a good 10 years at least. A little bit longer for Lisa, but she has to deal with me directly, but we've just finished up the June 30th, 2024 audit. Apologize for having that later than I wanted to, but certainly employment staffing problems kind of got in the way of a lot of that stuff, and I'm just not as young as I used to be. I'm going to go through these pretty darn quick, but if you have any questions along the way, just, just ask me. Just stop me and ask me. Let's turn back to page one, top of the page, says Independent Audit Report at the top. This is, this is what we're hired to do, give an opinion on, on the financial statements embodied in this independent auditors report. Just going down through there a little bit of the elements of our opinion. Top of the page, under opinion, we have audited the accompanying cash basis financial statements of Scottsbluff County, Nebraska for the year ended June 30th, 2024. Next paragraph down, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So basically, a clean opinion. Next paragraph down, basis for opinion, we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Next paragraph down, calling attention to the users of the financial statements, that these are prepared on the cash basis of accounting. So none of your fixed assets, none of your other assets are listed, none of your liabilities are listed. It's basically a cash in, cash out. So the only asset is cash and fund balance on your, on your statement of net position. We'll go through that a little bit more when we get to it. Next paragraph down, just clarifying that management's responsibility. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Now, there's a lot of numbers that go into those, and we put those together for the county, but we give the county the opportunity to review those and let us know if they are in agreement with them or if they're not in agreement with them, make changes where necessary. There have been a couple things that we've changed, but nothing too, too big. Top of the next page, making the users of the financial statements know, known what our audit responsibilities are. Our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. When considering reasonable assurance, next paragraph, sentence down, reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but not absolute assurance. In performing, next section down, in performing an audit, we exercise professional judgment, identify and assess the risks and material misstatement, obtain an understanding of internal control, evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies, and conclude about Scottsbluff County's ability to continue as a going concern for a reasonable period of time. Next section down is supplementary information, making the users of the financial statements know that there are some supplementary information, including the basic financial statements, and they are, all the supplementary information is presented on pages 29 through 41. So there's quite a bit of supplemental information there. Page three, other reporting required by government auditing standards. We also have issued a government auditing standards report. In the state of Nebraska, all governments have to be audited according to government auditing standards, and we'll cover that report when we get back to it. It's on page 42. Page four, top of the page, statement of net position, cash basis. This is what we call the government-wide financial statement. Most people would call this balance sheet on the cash basis. All you're really going to see there is cash. It will present your fund balance or net position in this case. You can see total cash is 14 million, and restricted portion is about 6.6 million, unrestricted about 7.4 million. Page five, top of the page, statement of activities, cash basis. Again, government-wide, a lot of people would call this the income statement, but on a governmental entity, it's called the statement of activities. All your disbursements are presented first in the left-hand column there, and then that's offset by charges for services, operating grants and contributions, and then there's an unfunded portion there that's funded by other revenues like taxes and other state general receipts. Total disbursements for the year, 39 million, 39.2 million, and about 7.4 million in, in charges for services, 7.9 million in operating grants and contributions, and a lefted unfunded portion of about 23.8 million. That was offset by property taxes of about 14.2 million, other state general receipts of a 2.7 million, and other receipts of about 1.4 million. Net disbursements over receipts of 5.4 million, and most of that's the ARPA funds. There's about 3.3 million expended out of the ARPA fund. Actually, received that grant back in '21, about 7 million back in '21.
Over two years now.
Yeah. So it's not like the county really went down by 5.4 million. You went up by 7 million back several years ago, and now you're spending the money. Page six, top of the page, statement of net of assets and fund balances, cash bases. These are what's called the fund financial statements, and it's just, it's basically the same as your first two pages, except that we're breaking it down by fund. So you can see the general fund and about four other major funds, and then we've got a non-major governmental funds aggregate there. But you can see the 14 million cash there is exactly the same that's up on page four. And then there's a little bit different breakdown of the fund balances there. Page seven, David. Page seven, payment receipts, dispersments and changes in fund balances, cash bases. Again, on the fund basis, showing the receipts first and the dispersments second. In broad, general function categories, you can see the general government is nine point seven million. And public safety is about thirteen million. And then we had the net receipt, net dispersments over receipts of five point four million. We had operating transfers in and out of about ten point three million, which equal each other. Started the year at nineteen million, ended the year at fourteen million in cash. Page eight, top of the page, statement of receipts, dispersments and changes in net position for fiduciary funds. These are all the funds that the county has that they're holding for somebody else. When the treasurer collects the property taxes for the schools, that's the receipts here, when she disperses it, that's the dispersion that's there. Not only schools, cities, villages, all fire districts, all cemetery districts, all of those different districts. So we had about sixty eight million come in, sixty eight million come out, started the year about two point three million, ended the year about two point three million. Page nine, top of the page, notes to the financial statements. Notes to the financial statements are gonna tell the users of the financial statements about the county's operations and its activities. It's gonna tell the users of the financial statements about significant accounting policies employed in developing these financial statements. It's gonna give details of transactions and balances that are embodied in the financial statements. And it's gonna tell them about conditions and events that are, have affected during the audit period or currently affecting the accounting now, such as COVID nineteen and that was going on. The notes go from page nine through twenty eight. There's been no real significant changes from the prior year, they all changed, you know, balances changed, dates changed, things like that nature. But the, the notes are pretty much the same as they were last year. Turning all the way back to page twenty nine, beginning of the supplementary information. Supplementary information contained in these, this reporting package is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which is exactly what it says, just a detailed program listed expenditure report for federal programs the county has undertaken. It also has budget and actual comparison schedules for all major funds and the aggregate non-major funds. And then it's got a combining schedule for non-major funds. We'll not go through those too detailed, but if you turn back to page thirty, you can see the total expenditures of federal awards there about mid-page, five, almost five point four million for the county. That's what the federal government maybe not hasn't given you this year, but you have spent of what they did give you this year. Page forty two. This is what we call our government auditing standards report. If you remember when I was discussing the independent audit report, we referenced that. Government auditing standards are, require the auditor to communicate if a county has significant or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in, in internal control, matters that they found in, in doing their audit. There's, on internal control, bottom of the page, we did identify a certain deficiency in internal control that we consider to be a material weakness described in the accompanying schedule of findings and question costs as twenty twenty four dash zero zero one that we consider to be a material weakness. And that finding's the same finding that we have every year. You know, a lot of entities in Western Nebraska are small enough, a lot of counties operate small offices out here, and they have cash and they collect cash at that office, and they don't have a lot of segregation of duties. I know we've discussed it with most of you, not all of you. You know, the, the requirements, or the, the hope that we would have some segregation. But basically, you know, the person that's doing the transaction shouldn't be authorizing the transaction, shouldn't be reviewing the transaction, so on and so forth. And we do have some pretty small accounts here, but we also have some pretty big accounts in which, you know, one or very few people are in control of some pretty significant dollars going across, you know, bank statements and stuff like that. That's not the best condition in the world. And, and I can tell you, bad things can happen and will happen when we have those conditions present. Your responsibility is just to question everything you can, look at things, or you could try to change those things too. I mean, you could hire people to get some segregation of duties, but that's a pretty high price. Labor's not cheap. You gotta pay somebody to be there and do those duties. And so, in a lot of cases, you're gonna say, well, we're gonna live with it and we're gonna mitigate it when we can. We're gonna have some, you know, other people look at stuff when they can, either on a quarterly basis or even on an annual basis, to identify things that don't look right, I guess. But you guys have the opportunity on every board meeting to look at all the disbursements and say, geez, you know, what are we spending that on? Do we actually approve that, or is that a good buy or a bad buy, and what did we get for that? And it doesn't, I mean, you guys read the papers and you know how things happen across the state of Nebraska, and things do happen. Won't harp on that anymore, I guess. Top of page forty three. Also government auditing standards would require us to notify the board in this report if we had any matters of non-compliance, material non-compliance. Last sentence of that first paragraph on page forty three. The results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Page forty four, top of the page, we call this our uniform guidance report. Uniform guidance deals directly with the federal programs and deals with, basically with what the government auditing standards report also deals with. So if there was a compliance findings with your federal programs, we would report it here. And if there was some internal control matters, we would report it here. Second paragraph, in our opinion, Scottsbluff County Nebraska complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So a clean opinion. Reporting on internal control. Kind of mid, mid-down on page forty five, there's a bold report on internal control over compliance. And the top of page forty five, we consider the deficiency in internal control over compliance described in the accompanying schedule of findings and question cost as twenty twenty four dash zero zero one to be a material weakness. Same finding we had for the financial statements, lack of segregation of duties over accounting functions. Page forty seven, top of the page, schedule of finding and question cost. I kind of refer this to, to the government cheat sheet. Everything that's listed here is already covered in our reports. It's just a tabular schedule that helps the federal government when we, when we get done with the audit, we have to submit it to them. And it helps them have all, everything that they need to know about the audit report. So I imagine they take everything before this and throw it away and they use this. And then we have the findings, and then we have the county's corrective action plan on page fifty one. Just dealing with stating the county's position on the segregation of accounting functions. Any questions on those financial statements? Too long?
I was short.
I think everybody was in a team.
I was so painless with mine.
What'd you leave out?
I forgot what you were drinking before. Maybe made a little bit more appealing, huh?
Well, it is.
I also have a, a letter to the board. Under our audit obligations, we're required to communicate certain matters to the board. This is, we decided just to do this in writing. This is what I would call a standard letter, really doesn't report much. But it does report significant estimates and must-. Really deal with all your budget numbers and budgetary comparisons that we presented. Those are estimated numbers. And that, that letter, this letter discloses that to you. Also significant notes in the financial statements. Your debt note is, is pretty significant. Again, it's on the cash, your financial statements are on the cash basis, and without relating it to the notes, you really don't get a whole picture of what the county's debt is. You see that service payments on there, which are pretty significant to the county, but the outstanding debt, you have to go back to the note for that.
Is your opinion included in that letter as well? Is your opinion included in that letter as well?
No, this is just, this is, requires certain matters to be communicated. Our opinion is in our audit.
I see, I read that.
Any question, oh, you got a question?
So I got a question, in fact, you were touching on it right there. I'm looking on page twenty two, where we're talking about long-term debt. And so, we have some long-term debt, I'm looking on page twenty two and twenty three.
You're in there, you're gonna give me a little bit?
Okay.
That fingers. Okay, I'm there.
So, our total long-term debt with bonds payable, and apparently then down further, capital leases, notes payable. I believe it says, it was sixteen million and we're now down to ten million.
Yep.
Alright, so we paid off six.
We had a big chunk.
Million in this past year.
That statewide radio they had financed with Motorola.
Right.
You guys took that ARPA money and.
Right, it was some ARPA money again, and, okay.
And that total number included the radios for all the other political subdivisions as well.
The, the debt is yours, even though you've got agreements with other entities. They're paying you and you're paying the debt, and that's really what that four point six is. I think your share of that was two point nine.
These dollars for the radios for Sheriff's Department.
Okay. And that was, again, ARPA money that we knew we were gonna have money to, available to pay those back.
Yep.
I guess as I look at this, I'm seeing on the next page, page twenty three, about payments that will be due in twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine.
Yep.
And then even into thirty to thirty four and thirty five to thirty nine, one more payment it looks like. And I'm just trying to figure out, I don't believe that we've added to any debt in the last six years or so. Now, some of the debt that I know of is that we have the, when we add it on to the jail.
Well, during the year ended June thirtieth, twenty four, you did sign on to a hundred and, you look on twenty, page twenty two. I'd have to go, you tested my memory here, which ain't that great anymore, but on page twenty two, you can see you added a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in the capital lease there. That was really the Melbida Fire Department? You guys signed on to it, Melbida will pay you and you'll pay Melbida, pay them, but, but really, I mean, that's really your debt, that's where that's going.
Technically it is, but we're technically gonna be paid back if all goes well, right.
I think, isn't the next line, road graders?
The next line, notes payable, I, I, the road graders and the capital leases, the notes payable is that hanger, I believe.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I, I think that's all in the, that's the only thing in the notes.
Oh, and the grader is gonna be in there too and adding on, so when you say nothing's pending, we haven't taken on any more debt, well, just, you have to kind of think of our financing.
And we certainly did the road grader story rather than. So, yeah, we did make that a lease. This bigger portion of the ten million, ten point nine million in bonds, that would have been from, I'm assuming back from the jail and that Sugar Factory Road when we borrowed money for that. Is that?
That's one twenty five.
And those will all be paid off?
They're listed right up above there. You can, on page twenty one, it starts the capital leases, so you can see nine one one equipment. And then there's a road grader in there for a hundred and thirty two thousand. Notes payable is the hanger, and we have some general obligation bonds issued in twenty twenty, highway allocation pled bonds issued in twenty twenty, general obligation bonds again on the next page issued in twenty twenty, and then limited tax obligation bonds in twenty twenty two.
That's when we refinanced.
I was gonna say, that's when you found a better interest rate, correct?
Yeah.
So they're, they're saying twenty twenty, but that's really the refinancing.
That was the issue date of the refinancing.
Right.
Not the original date, I think these limited tax obligations were actually from two thousand fourteen.
And earlier.
They might, they might have been refinanced in two thousand fourteen, you got refinanced in twenty twenty.
So, some of these interest rates are around two percent or whatever.
We're not gonna get them, get that anymore.
Some are less than that.
We got one in here at four point nine five.
Probably a.
That's that little one at one eighty seven.
Hundred eighty seven thousand.
Some start out small and just grow over time.
Four point nine five, that's that hanger that we're kind of tied into, but they, but we aren't making the payments.
Right, we're getting paid for that. It's the same thing, we borrowed the money, but we're getting paid back. We're really not making that payment.
It just shows that we owe.
Technically we do, but the money comes from somebody else.
They quit paying.
It sounds like everything we do.
Well, the stuff we've seen in, in the news recently with Mike Foley and the Nebraska Auditor of Accounts. I mean, he's turned over a lot of rocks recently. Audit like this wouldn't necessarily do the same thing that he's doing, is that correct?
No, no, I, he, that is specific.
Rescuing.
So he knew. My, my focus are the financial statements. Now, good, good question.
I'll just, just to kind of give an example, we had, this past year, we, we uncovered a department head was buying tennis shoes and calling it uniform. Part of his uniform. That sort of stuff would not be uncovered in this audit.
It, it could be.
Okay.
But that's not our focus. You know, I mean, my, my focus, when I, when I look at samples, I look at the risk. And generally, you know, fifty dollar tennis, it's gonna be a risk. And it, it just won't have an effect on financial statements. That doesn't mean that I haven't found fifty dollar things, I mean, did I have? And it's just, you know, you run into them and get, you know, open, get to see them. And sometimes it's a matter of opinion.
Kevin, stay close to the microphone if you want.
So you do get in some of those kind of perspective type things. But that's, and that's not what I'm trying to do here, you know, even though, you know, if I think it's, that might not be fraudulent, that might be abusive, and I would just report that to the appropriate level. You know, if it was mildly, I mean, like tennis shoes. And they, you know, I've had people say, hey, we need special boots. And it'd be pretty special boots. I'd say, that's just, that's pretty expensive special boots. Um, I'd say, that's just, that's pretty expensive special boots. Um, it sounds a little bit abusive. Probably would just report it to lease and say, hey, you might bring this to the board's attention and see what they think. You guys are the bosses. I mean, you, you tell people what kind of boots they need. That's really what, what it comes down to. And it, and you know, if they really need them, you guys don't have to approve the bill. That's, that's kind of where your authority comes. So, but yes, there are times when we, probably in a lot of that gray stuff, and we don't run into a whole lot of that, but, but when you're talking about, you know, probably that school district back east, yeah, it's, uh, we don't run into a whole lot of that. And that's not our obligation, that's not what we planned for, that's not what we look for. Do run into it, and when we do, that's when you would find that in our government auditing standard report. Um, but what, what Mike Foley was doing was specifically identified information from the public saying, hey, there's a problem here. You need to go investigate it. He pulled up ADN, said, I'm gonna go investigate, like the sheriff would. And, and I don't have that authority. I, I'm here as a guest. And, and you guys give me what you will, and I'll ask for it, and if you don't give me enough, I'll just say, well, I'm not gonna opine on this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna disclaim an opinion, because you didn't give me the information I requested. Is that kind of clear?
So, normally my question is, what concerns do you have? And I think you've given us that in writing and-
My, my concern, I mean, uh, Mark, I try and stay close. I get to walk and wander in a little bit. But my concerns, um, you know, I, I have little concerns everywhere, you know? Um, but they are s- small, you know? I mean, when I say small, maybe I didn't get, you know, a reconciliation. Um, but it's a small account and I can kind of see the transactions coming in and out. And, and nothing came to my attention that I think I should say, oh, let's, let's bar the doors and, you know, get the, call the sheriff, you know? I mean, there's just nothing like that.
Sure.
But there's, there's always little things, you know? Like I wish somebody would do a little better job.
Sure.
You know, at this or that.
Every year you bring up the segregation of duties. And, um, you know, in almost every audit I've ever been involved with, that item gets brought up. Now, in my opinion, in the larger funds, particularly when we talk about the general fund or whatever, of course, the, um, the money comes in and goes to the treasurer's office. And the money then is not spent from that office, generally speaking. But the bills are paid from Kelly's office. And so, um, for the most part. And so to that extent, we have some segregation, um, in the larger funds is the smaller ones.
It's just not a preferable, but, but it's not, it's not top shelf either, you know? I mean, you just gotta understand that. Like, like I was trying to say, you don't have to look too far before you find, you know, Cherry Counter, County Clerk, uh, you know, Isanty School District. I mean, it, it's, you, can you? Yeah, somebody with half inclination and half of mind, yeah, could, could do it. Could do it. And, and a lot of people think, well, gosh, you know, just like you were kind of alluding to, well, the, the money comes in, well, how could, how could the treasurer do anything? Well, she just doesn't receive the cash. Just doesn't receive it. Oh, I mean, we had, and we had that over at the jail one time. You know, several years ago, probably before everybody else, you, you guys weren't even on the board. You know, where, where things were coming in at the jail and not getting receiveded over there. It's just things, you know, wasn't big money. I mean, can you, can you spend money without it getting, getting on the books? Sure, I mean, you had that too, where somebody was going down to Napa and charging auto parts, just happened to be for sixty-nine Cuda. You know, uh, you know, I mean, it's just gonna happen. Can it happen? Yeah, when you give authority to people. Now, the other side of the coin is you can't watch everything. I mean, you just can't stand over everybody do, and watch. But you can have some decent controls and plays to, to have authorizations to, to do certain things and then review that process, those transactions, in a skeptical light, to say, jeez, I don't, I mean, I know this is a starter, but I don't remember any, any vehicle needing a starter. What's this for? That was for the bus. Well, let's go out and take a look at it, see if it's brand new.
Sure.
You know, and, you know, especially if you don't remember something. But, and, and I gotta tell you, I'm not here every day. I, I don't know these things. You know, if they say it's a, it's a starter or an alternator, and they needed it for the bus, and Kelly's got a invoice for it, I'm gonna look at it and say, yeah, everything looks good here and the board voted on it. Thumbs up. But who knows?
Right, I, yeah, but it's hard to track every single purchase and, um, to the extent that the supervisor-
The department has, you know, have to keep an eye on it, and you gotta keep an eye on it. Everybody's gotta do their part here. You know?
I think my last question is, um, cash reserves. Um, so it appears, I believe that the cash reserves here have went down a little this year, if I understand this correctly.
Well, when you, now, when you say cash reserves, that to me says budget-wise. Um, but your cash went down. It went down by five point four million. That sounds like a lot.
Right, but it's primarily ARPA funds, and that's not the concern that our standard, um, what I call cash reserves for the general fund would be?
Yeah, I, 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 I would say that cash isn't any lower than it's ever been.
Okay, and did you, have you recommended for us what you feel that cash reserve should be?
I, that, that cash, again, a cash reserve, well, it really is how much cash should you have on hand at any point in time?
Right.
I, I would say no less than four months.
That's right.
That's the very limit of it. But I can tell you other counties kind of, kind of do that and run out of some cash. You know, and, and, you know, have to go to the bank, borrow some money for a couple of months before the taxes start rolling back in. I don't think that's the best thing to do, because then, especially in today's interest rates.
Right.
You don't, I don't think you wanna have to borrow money at that.
So I'm, yeah, I, we, I certainly have been seeing three to four months.
You know, if I were sitting in your position, where would I be voting? I'd be voting about six months where the cash reserve.
And right now, we have about two.
Yeah, we cut back.
So, we need to keep that in mind as we look at our budget section.
Well, just a minute, you didn't vote it for that.
No, I didn't vote.
Yeah, you did.
I didn't even have a vote. I didn't see a ballot box here.
You did.
Alright, any other questions for Kevin?
So, with your, uh, segregation of duties, would, are you asking us to have another set of eyes to look in, looking at things? What are you, what are you, what does it do? Give me a little more definition.
Use my office. Do the, remember how the person doing payroll was reconciling our account for that account? Making the deposit herself, um, reconciling the statement? We don't have that anymore. You can, as an example, payables, same thing. Someone else that handles the payment of the money, the requesting from the treasurer, someone else is reconciling those accounts also.
Uh, what I'm reckon, what, what I'm asking you guys to do is, is recognize, and, and all the department heads, is recognize that those conditions exist. And to keep bad things from happening, look at things through skeptical eyes.
Takes more eyes.
Not necessarily more eyes. I mean, you can mitigate it. It's not gonna be perfect.
They have to be positioned.
And cross train, cross train.
Cross, yeah, I agree.
Um, you, you know, I mean, just nilly-willy signing up and stuff and saying, yep, okay, go, yeah, go. You know, you're, that's gonna, you're gonna cause, you're gonna get bit. You're just gonna get bit.
But it needs to be looked over more than one person doing it.
And, and I think you guys have the capability. I mean, for all the years I've been doing this, um, yeah, we've had some issues. But nothing really egregious, you know? I mean, but, you know, we got the public here to answer to.
I bet.
I mean, they, they, they don't want you wasting ten bucks of their tax dollars.
I don't like my tax money wasted either.
Yeah, and so, so we kind of know where the threshold is. I mean, ten dollars for my purposes, ain't gonna change my opinion on these financial statements. But would it be in the front page of the paper? Probably, yeah. You know, there's gonna be a problem there and, and then you're gonna have people, citizens to answer to. You know, what, what have you been doing to make sure that that doesn't happen?
Mm-hmm.
And, and my suggestion is, is always be aware that that stuff can be happening. Ask good questions, get good answers, get documentation, and you feel, think, your hair on your back, you're not gonna stand up.
Oh, yeah?
When you don't feel like it's right, you just stand right up.
Well, you know when it's, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Alright, we don't need to take any action on this item, do we?
We don't have to approve?
No, they just-
Just receive it?
Just accept it.
Alright, so we're gonna go to the next item. When we're finished with this next item, then we are gonna take a break. Um, the next item is discuss and consider approval of resolution setting the date of recall election, um, from the board and, uh, the county clerk. Um, Ms. Kelly, are you gonna, um, give us the information, I guess, uh, that you think we need to know and what you're recommending?
It, it is in the resolution.
Okay, and we do have that?
Are you gonna make me read out loud?
Um, you know, I think someone probably should. You want to?
Not particularly.
What?
Just 'cause I don't do this good.
Okay.
Whereas on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, a recall affidavit was filed against Charlie Knapper, Scotts Bluff County Commissioner, District Three, by Mitch Wagers, Principal Circulator. And whereas on May twenty-seventh, said petitions were issued to Principal Circulator, Mitch Wagers. And whereas on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, said petitions were returned to the county clerk's office for signature verification. And whereas after the completion of the verification of signatures, the following certification was made by the Scotts Bluff County Clerk on June twenty-seventh, and service was made on Charlie Knapper and the governing body, Scotts Bluff County Board of Commissioners, on June twenty-seventh by personal service. Total number for recall purposes, five hundred ninety-five. Total signatures submitted, seven hundred forty-five. Total rejected signatures, thirty-five. Total valid signatures, seven hundred and ten. Whereas the governing body, body, said Board of Commissioners hereby finds by said certification that the total number of valid signatures required by law for purposes of a recall election has been met. And whereas the governing body, said Board of Commissioners, set the date for said recall election to be held on September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, in the voting precincts of the Scotts Bluff County, Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby directs the Scotts Bluff County Clerk to conduct a recall election to be held on September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, in the voting precincts of County Commissioner, District Three, County of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, adopted and dated the seventh day of July, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. So my understanding is that, um, Kelly has confirmed with the state that this date is basically the only one that fits within the parameters that they lay out?
Base, and, and it's the, the law, not the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, state statute.
So, um, based on the date of service and the timeline, it says at least eight Fridays after I have notified you. And you just count forward to what that would be from the date of it, and it, it's calculated from there.
Okay, so my understanding is Kelly has looked at this, Jason Ocean has looked at this, and we all agree that this is the date that's available. I wanna be sure and, uh, mention tonight that this is not a vote as to, for the purpose of saying whether or not we agree or not agree about Charlie's recall. What this is, is a procedural vote to follow state statute that says we're required to set a date. And, um, if we don't do it, it actually ends up going to the county attorney's office and he's gonna do it. And, um, so, um, I believe it's simply procedural and it's, in my opinion, required. And, um, so certainly this, um, resolution, um, as was read by Kelly, um, I believe is appropriate and has the correct information in it. And, um, uh, for the purpose of, uh, for this purpose, I'm gonna move that we adopt this resolution as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as presented. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I'd had, uh, a couple of questions asked of whether or not, uh, Mr. Knapper should, uh, call a conflict of interest with this. I visited with Jason a little bit before the meeting started. He assured me that this was not, the vote that we're taking is not the conflict of interest. It's whether or not we, we wanna move forward or whether we don't. And, and I, I'm, I'm still not a hundred percent convinced, Jason, that, that it's not a conflict of interest. Uh, if, if Charlie would vote on this, either yes or no. I mean, it really doesn't matter.
Well, he could abstain if he chose to, but, you know, the state statute that I'm looking at is, um, thirty-two thirteen oh six that says, after the information has been submitted to Kelly's sides, and she's confirmed these things, that, that the governing body of the political subdivision shall, within a certain period of time, order an election. And so then you've got a different statute, thirty-two four oh five, that says special election when these are held. And, um, that's set by the legislature. And, uh, Kelly and I went through and did what we call election math and came up with the same, the same date of Tuesday, September ninth. And then you've got a state statute that says that the, um, county clerk or the county election commissioner here in this county, it's the same person, um, has the authority to schedule that by mail, hold the election by mail and what the criteria is to do that. There's certain criteria she has to consider, including the cost to the county if you were to do it another way, whether or not there's another election that's already upcoming, and, um, some other factors. So, I think the resolution is essentially saying that we've looked at these factors and we, with this direction from the legislature, that we shall set the election. Which is, that's what the resolution is approving.
So, in your opinion, you don't feel that Mr. Knapper needs to not vote in this? Is that correct?
I don't think this would indicate that he would be required not to.
We went through a process about, um, recusing ourselves and, um, I liked the idea where a person could decide to, um, present whether they thought they should recuse themselves or not. And then my preference was that the other four commissioners would vote on that. But then we very specifically, um, had direction that that's not the way that the state statute lays it out and that, um, that's not required. And so really, it leaves it up to that person to, um, to decide whether or not, um, they should be voting, or, yeah, voting or not voting and, and, you know, any one of us technically could abstain at any time. And, I mean, we can't make people vote.
I think the main thing here is, is that with the direction under state statute is, is if these requirements have been made and we have a county clerk that has confirmed that they have been,
You shall.
then we shall set this, set this election pursuant to another statute that says when it's to be held.
Alright. All right.
I believe Ms. Sides has appropriately gone through with candidate days and.
Okay.
It's not, it's not discretionary, it's mandatory. You have to, you shall set it.
Do it. Set a date.
You know, the result of not setting it, it, it's going to happen.
One way or another, it's going to.
You're the upper of the writ of mandamus in district court, and you go through that, it's.
And added expense.
Yeah.
On top of it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Come on up.
Mitch Wagers, you want me to spell that, Kelly? Here you go.
We make everybody else.
All right, so M.I.T.C.H.W.A.G.E.R.S. Just out of curiosity, what is, is there an estimated cost for the special election at this point?
I have an estimate.
You have an estimate?
I do.
Would you share it, or do you not?
It's like probably around ten thousand dollars.
I'm not going to hold anybody to that, I'm just curious what.
No, that's an estimate. I will bill you differently in the end when I have actual materials.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote?
In a minute you will.
Oh. Just now.
Okay.
Didn't go again.
Russ, yeah.
I'd do it again.
You have five yeses?
All right, so the, uh, motion carries. Um, we're going to be ready to go on to the next item, but we're going to take our eight-minute break. I'm declaring that to be at this point at five forty-two. We'll reconvene at five forty.
Five fifty.
Five fifty.
Five.
All right, recessed. Five fifty. All right, are you all set?
No.
We're getting ready to start.
Hey.
Well, we'll start.
We're ready.
Okay. The meeting will come back to order from recess. It is five fifty-one, just turned five fifty-one. So the next item is at the bottom of at least my agenda page. Uh, discuss and consider distracted driving personnel policy. Seventeen hundred point zero zero four. Lisa?
I'm getting. Just a sec.
Okay.
I got confused. Okay. Um, I think we given, we give you copies in the packets. And seventeen zero zero dot zero zero four. We brought this to you before. We have put together a policy regarding distracted driving that we want employees who drive county-owned vehicles to sign and turn in and put in their personnel files. And it keeps coming back because we already have sheriff department has their own policy for their employees. And then we brought in front of personnel board and says detention center has their own policy. Going to take out, strike out both those lines and just have a line that says departments with a driving policy in place should follow department-specific policy. However, Jason just brought to my attention, instead of should, you should probably say shall. Departments with a driving policy in place shall follow department-specific policy. And you can see there's another couple of lines that we were going to remove just because we didn't think that we needed that kind of specifics. Yeah, I almost there. This is what personnel board would like to bring to you. Do you have any questions or concerns?
So those things that you wanted to cross out are crossed out. The only real issue here is the word shall versus should in the green area.
Yes.
Okay.
So we would say instead of additionally, county employees are required to turn cell phones off or on, or put them on silent or vibrate before starting the county motorized vehicle. We don't have to say additionally, it's just another bullet point, bullet, bullet point. And then removing, consider modifying voice rail readings indicate that you are unavailable to answer. We just condensed some wording.
Do all of our, and I'm thinking maybe more in the roads department, are there radios in the vehicle or in the, in the, uh, gears?
Most everything has a radio.
They have communication.
Mm-hmm. Right. They can pick that radio up and talk and let it ring back now.
So all of them have, are equipped with that?
Okay. But if they have a policy in their department, they can use theirs.
Right, right.
It could supersede it.
So the foreman for the roads, they're driving down the road, their cellphone goes off. We expect that they would pull over to the side and give their full attention to the phone, not the phone and driving.
I would move for approval of the policy as presented.
A little second. And that, can I clarify that that would, that word should would be changed to shall?
It doesn't show it here, but it will be, right?
Yeah.
That, that's part of the motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the, um, distracted driving policy with that one word change? Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none will vote?
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll go to the next item, which is discuss and consider appointed official, uh, performance evaluation personnel policy, forty-three hundred. Lisa?
Okay, we've been discussing in the personnel board, performance evaluations. And one, this, this policy came up, and there is one area that we can, we can tell you has not been followed. And, but we want to, we don't want it removed, we want it to be followed, or that's what the board was bringing forward, and that's towards the end. The yellow is there currently. The chairman of the county, okay, I'll read the whole thing. The final evaluation forms will be reviewed with the official by the chairman of the county board's delegate or representative. The chairman of the county board's delegate or representative will brief the board chairman of the evaluation. The board chairman will sign off on all evaluations. We haven't necessarily been following that, but we think that's a good procedure.
How does that work if the employee doesn't sign off on that evaluation? We've had that in the past. If they were not signed, does he still sign them if they're not complete?
Yeah, they were, they're moving forward and they're saying, but they need, they probably need a rebuttal in there, but.
Okay.
Just a quick question. You, you'd said that we haven't been doing that.
No.
I don't remember ever signing off on an evaluation. That's a lot of evaluations.
It's a lot, you know?
I mean, and that would be somebody that reports to Russ that now Mark will need to also sign off. And we're talking, that's eight people.
Oh, that's not every evaluation.
No, we're just the appointed officials.
Only supervisors.
Appointed officials.
Oh, yeah.
Supervisor.
It wasn't my idea. In fact, I wasn't particularly excited about it.
But it's eight.
Because it's going to be, yeah, if it being just eight, it's, it's, uh, certainly a little different. Um, and it's doable. So, but anyway.
And the part we would add to the policy, and if the chairman of the county board is a delegate or representative, then the vice chairman will sign off on the evaluation. We have two signatures on the appointed officials. Annual evaluations.
How will you verify that they're completed and they're turned in? Do you have a date on when they're supposed to be in anything?
When they're what? Well, I mean, you pass this today, and this is the new process. And then, you know, like I'm in the process of getting my evaluation done. Jay's getting his done soon.
Yeah.
And just, you know, just throughout the year.
Sure.
It isn't.
So it is, there's not a specific date, it's just whenever.
Whenever that is based on your anniversary date.
Anniversary, okay.
But it would go into effect right away, basically?
If you pass it tonight, yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion? So we have a motion, right? No, not on this one, we don't.
My move that we accept the changes to the appointed officials' performance evaluation, whereas the chairman will sign off on all evaluations. And in his absence, the vice chair will be authorized to sign those evaluations.
Or will also, will also sign on.
Right. Okay. So that's the motion, is our second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
What needs to be done to complete, uh, evaluations done last twelve months or last eighteen months? We need to go back?
If that's what the board would tell us, but at this point, we would just start this from here on. It's been part of the policy, you're right, but it's not a matter of do I pull everybody's eval for the last?
It's only eight.
Yeah, we could go back.
I think it might be wise to cover our bases.
How do you all feel?
Shouldn't be that many done, then it wouldn't be a problem.
Mark doesn't mind.
Since Charlie Knapper is the vice chair.
Name.
Excuse me. Lisa Betz Marquez. Do you need me to spell it? B.E.T.Z. M.A.R.Q.U.E.Z. Since Charlie Knapper is the vice chair, I'd like to understand whether an alternative would be possible in the case of Brenda Lysy's, uh, review to sign off.
I would say this board has appointed me the vice chair for a reason.
Mm-hmm. And yet there was an investigation into your retaliation, wasn't there?
Which I was cleared.
Were you? Hmm, I don't think so.
He's not, he would just, I mean, sorry, Brenda, he's been, we have to have that last eval. You'd have to have Mark signing off on all the ones prior.
Right.
I'm just suggesting that you move forward from this day and let the bygones be gone, the, the past be the past and be completed, for good reason.
Um, and I think that, um, the signing of, um, any future, um, would primarily be for the, um, I as the chairman am not going to have a major, um, odd or input of the substance of what's in that evaluation. The focus of me signing it is to say, yes, this got done. It's been filled out, and the person that was responsible to do it is kind of doing their job. And, and we've given the employee an op, an opportunity to sign and rebut. And I think that would be my, um, intent, but it's certainly not to go over every line item as to what their, uh, performance is because I'm not going to know the answer to those questions in most cases.
How long have you been chairman, too?
About a little less than a year right now.
Yeah.
I would simply suggest that you begin this new policy today or tomorrow and move forward. And that's all I needed to say.
We'll be aware of what you're saying and be careful of that situation. Okay, um, any other discussion?
Just a quick question on what Lisa said. So going back, all you're do, all you're doing is verifying that that evaluation is done. That's all you're doing.
In my opinion, that's all I'd be looking at. Again, we, yeah, how far do you go back? We could go back ten years because I don't think they've been done for ten years.
However long it's been on the books.
Right, and it's been on the books.
And that's a good point. How far back are you going to go?
Maybe we should start today and move on.
I, that, I, I, I think so also.
I agree with that.
If, if it's been in the books for however long, then if we're going to do it, let's do it clear back ten years.
If we recognize that, that we've been lax on it, we need to start today.
We, we fixed it.
We fixed it, we're going to move on.
We're going to fix it with this, with this vote. I agree with that.
Okay.
So do we have a motion yet?
Yes.
You've already done it, and you have a second.
And I have a second.
Yes.
All right.
Nothing to include go back, going back and checking them, no? Is that correct?
No.
You're just verifying signatures.
No, I'm talking about going back, going back, this starting as of this vote. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote?
Works about half the time.
You have five yeses?
Motion's carried. Yep, thank you. So the next item is discuss and consider approval and signature for inmate communication system with Network Communication International Corporation doing business as N.V.I.V. Correctional Services, N.C.I.C.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and we've, we've talked to you about this before. We did an RFP. And, uh, and, uh, actually, this was, this was the best deal for the county. We're already working with them to get this installed. And it, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing that they gave us two options. And I think we talked the last time about, there was an FCC rule that was going to, in July of this year, cause the, the the price per minute for phone calls to go way down. And so in this, this group, N.C.I.C., was the, the only vendor that offered us two different options. Option one was if the FCC, if that rule doesn't go away, then we pay you this, but if it does go away, we pay you this, which is a lot more money. And so the FCC has put that on hold until two thousand twenty-seven. So, uh, so anyhow, we need you to approve the signature, um, for, for that. And we've went through the RFP. They're the best of the three vendors. I'd ask you to approve that.
And so that FCC ruling did not go into effect, and so Will paid less?
Yeah, there was a lot, a lot of opposition for that, to that, because it's like, well, you're charging this much per minute for phone calls, and it doesn't cost that much. But the vendors say, yes, but these are phone calls from inside a facility, and we're supplying all the equipment. It's not a phone that you just bought and can use forever and ever. This is hardened stuff that they're using to make the phone calls on. Plus, we have to have recording equipment and documentation equipment for every phone call because every, every inmate, every call that that inmate makes, unless it's to his attorney, is reported.
Part is, do we, we still charge the inmate for that call?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does that change with, with any of this?
No.
It stays the same?
The inmates still have to pay for phone calls.
But they're cheaper, you're saying?
Well, right now, they're, they're going to, they're going to stay with this, stay pretty much, stay at the same price they're at right now. Had this FCC rule gone into effect, they would have dropped a lot.
It would have lowered the cost to the inmate, which would have effectively raised the cost to them and us.
Yeah, right now, the, the cost to the inmate is now going to stay the same as it has been.
Right. So the primary thing we're needing to do here is, um, approve the, um, contract with.
Yeah, it's called N.C.I.C.
N.C.I.C. Okay.
That's what we need to do. I would move for approval.
A little second. I have a motion and a second to approve the contract with N.C.I.C. as presented. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll, um, proceed with the vote.
Okay, now you missed out, Ken.
I did?
We can't see.
There you go.
Okay. I'm looking over here.
You have five yeses.
I gotta push mine twice most of the time.
Yeah, I can.
That's all right. Well, that's why I told you.
Do we need Mark's signature on this?
I'll. All right, so the motion's carried.
And how many votes?
I, I seen five green ones up there.
You have five vote, five yeses?
Five yeses.
Yeah. All right.
Just get it since it's here.
I didn't know you didn't have the screen.
Forgot that it was behind.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item and that's to ratify the chairman's signature on the 2025 High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA Grant Award. Sheriff?
Okay, gentlemen, this is before, again, you've, you see this every year. We live in a, we live in a county, Scottsbluff County is one of half a dozen counties or so in Nebraska. It's been denoted by the federal government as High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. We, our drug task force, our wing drug task force is part of Midwest HIDA, based in Kansas City. And they have been giving us grants at sometime in the nineties. And so this is money that there is no match required, but it does, it does go through Scottsbluff County. And so it's, it's, it's really important to what we do because this, we can use things that are in this funding that we don't have anywhere else. It saves us money. It saves sheriff's department money. It saves the state patrol money. Gearing, Scottsbluff PD, that's, that's who's in, that's who's part of HIDA. Olive Wing isn't part of HIDA, only, the only HIDA investigators are those that are based here in Scottsbluff County. But it, it actually, with some of the equipment that we can buy, it does benefit every wing investigator in the Panhandle.
And this, we're ratifying my signature?
Yeah.
Because the sheriff brought it to me last week.
Right.
Needing it done sooner.
Right.
And then he's asking it to be ratified. I signed it last.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Not entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on the HIDA grant.
I'll second that. A motion and a second, any other discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Second.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll go, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is ratify chairman's signature on the 2026 Justice Assistance Grant JAG Grant Award. Mark?
Gentlemen, this is another wing grant comes, it begins at the federal government, goes all through the states, comes to Nebraska, to the crime commission. So wing applies for this grant through the crime commission. And we were successful. It's a little over a hundred thousand dollars and it's, it will pay overtime for wing investigators throughout the Panhandle. And so there are, I think, 10 agencies that are involved in wing right now. And so it can help pay the overtime for those officers when they are involved in wing investigative activities. And again, there's no local match on this.
And again, we're ratifying my.
You're ratifying your signature.
So if we don't ratify.
Yeah, then I don't know what.
You'll be right there.
Mr. Overman assured me that it would be approved.
Okay.
Well, I move that we ratify the chairman's signature on the 2026 Justice Assistance Grant Award.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Now a motion and a second to ratify the chairman's signature on the JAG Grant Award. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Um, next item is discuss and consider approval of VSO interlocal agreement between Scottsbluff County and Kimball County. Lisa?
Right, this is just an update to an agreement we already had in place. When Matt Myers is serving as a VSO for Kimball County, we're charging for his time in to go and serve the veterans there. He doesn't go down very often, but they still need to have a dedicated VSO. I believe we changed the agreement from a thousand twenty-five a month to a thousand one twenty-five. Is that what yours says right now? I'm sorry. One thousand one fifty a month for his service, which equates to?
Thirteen thousand eight hundred.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred. And that take, it can potentially take away from our office, so we do go ahead and have them bill the county and it's deposited in the general fund. He also provides services to Banner County at a much lower rate because that's based on a lot less veterans, but it involves his whole office. So we take all their salaries and divide by our number of veterans to come up with a cost per veteran and then that number times how many Banner County veterans.
Is that how the Kimball County one was figured too?
Yes, except just for him and Kimball County.
The rest of his office.
Kimball County has an office worker, office coordinator down there that does a lot of, a lot of the work these gals can do, although our gals, I believe, are certified and she is not, but she still is in the office, provides office hours, can assist with form completion and whatever else they might, may need assistance with.
But she doesn't have official certification is what I understand.
Microphone, Mike.
I said she's not a veteran, so she can't hold that position.
Is that true? Because Lisa isn't a veteran.
You have to be a veteran to be a veteran service officer.
Right.
But you can, but you can get, you can get certified as the assistant.
But she's just a assistant.
Which our two gals downstairs are.
Yeah, and I don't believe Darcy Wieland is at this point, but she still has been in the capacity for several years and.
I think the last time Matt was here, you said she was working on it.
Right.
I remember right.
Darcy.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're just putting this in front of you. He's gotten signatures from Kimball County. He got signatures from both veteran service teams and committees, excuse me.
Veteran Service Committee in each county.
We need to complete the form by having.
I would move for approval of the agreement.
I'll second that. A motion and a second to approve the agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
And the motion's carried. All right, so that concludes the general business. We'll move on to the next item, which is Time Clock Plus and Payroll Process. Lisa, you have some information?
Yes, we had a phone call with Time Clock Plus today. Charlotte was out. Charlotte Hayek, payroll coordinator, has basically taken this over. And last week she was not in the office, so we visited with them today to see where they're, where they're at in the process. We're working with someone that's very workable. We, we like this person and we, and he seems to understand our problems or our concerns and has done his deep dive into the situation. And she is going to have another visit, I believe, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
After she's ready to upload information into TCP or have this gentleman help her upload. And then we hopefully got that bug worked out. Not real, it's, yeah, we thought it was set up. It's just need to upload the data for more employees.
Raise your hand if you're in this room and you're really good at Excel. If this column has this code, we need it to read as this word.
We can do this. I mean, Charlotte and I can do it.
She's the one asking.
Oh, well, then she needs to come back. It's some if. Yeah.
I am asking on her behalf because I don't know how to help her.
I can help her.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, is that pretty much it for now, Lisa?
That's what I have. It's, we're looking like we should have a much better report next time.
Great.
All right, we'll go to the next item, which is public comments. Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented today. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to say anything tonight? All right, let the record show there were none. We'll move on to the next item, which is board and staff reports. We'll start with staff. I think we'll start back in this corner. Troy, I see you sitting back there. Are you, do you have anything you want to report on? All right. I can't see behind there.
Cindy's farther behind.
Just a quick update. Got the invoice and titles today for the four buses we've been waiting on for two and a half years-ish. So we'll be getting the payment down to NDOT for those and making arrangements to go pick those up. And then have a meeting Wednesday with Commissioner Reisig and Steve Baird, myself, Lisa, working on our budgets. I am going to be trying to present my budget based on my original agreement with the state. So if we do get that funding back, it will line up with that. We don't have to go back through a bunch of oops to fix that. I did negotiate a 30% price increase with one of our Medicaid brokers, which will help offset some of our local match. And we've got a little bit of a rate increase through the aging office and Lee of Human Dignity for their in-town trips. They have a new billing system that does not allow us to change a lot of the billing structure, so it'll be just a flat billing rate for them. Whether it's the moral or within Scottsbluff Gearing, which will help increase some of that local match money. Keep that tax asking where we need it to be. So other than that.
Do you work from the state, Kurt, where it's moving?
No, they just, they just closed out the last invoice from FY 2324, about a month ago. We have to have all our invoices submitted for last fiscal year by August 15th. Once those have all done their desk audits, second tier approval, and the money's been dispersed back to the counties or the transit agencies, then they will know what they have to carry over. And at that point, then we start the discussions as to who gets how much. So other than that, that's about all we have right now. We're just trying to keep our, every cost we can in check in the interim.
Can we get all the funding on those buses?
That is set aside already in our 2201 fund. I have that. It's 100, it's 50, a little over 57,000 for all four. Those buses are about 135,000 each, so we only have to cover the 10%.
But it's all been covered.
Yep, it's already, already budgeted.
Great.
Thank you. Who's next back there? Anyone? Jane, Jane? Nothing? Heather? Who else? Tammy, you're back there. Is there, is there anybody else back there that I'm not seeing?
He's good.
All right, so Jackie?
I feel like I need to say something because I haven't been here for the last few meetings and you haven't heard from me. So I appreciate Lisa with Time Clock Plus. She came down, spent some quality time with myself and my staff to field all of our questions, make sure we had everything up to date. And so that was much appreciated in addition to all of my calls and emails. So we're spending quality time and I think we're in a good place now with that. My role as a early childhood educator, I don't necessarily work with children much. Sometimes I do on occasion, but my role is working with adults and providing professional development for anyone that works with young children. Even my own family sometimes will say, what do you do? Remind me what you're doing. That's my primary role. So in May, I brought in Janice Schwartz and Haley Jackson Perez, who's another educator across the state. She drove up to help us with the workshop. My piece was personality traits and team building for the Beyond School Bells staff. So they, Beyond School Bells funds a lot of our after-school programs here in the Panhandle. So we hosted a professional development event for about 22 folks across the, across the Panhandle that are engaged in these after-school programs. I engage with some of these folks here because my own grandchildren attend those after-school programs. They provide really quality program, quality leaders. We were there to just enhance the skills that they already have. And so now we're in discussions to bring more of that professional development out here because Lincoln and Omaha, they, you know, they host a lot there, but it's difficult, especially with these difficult times right now for our folks to drive out there. So they would like us to take on more of a role in providing professional development for them out here. We've been looking at a conference. So I'm glad that that, we formed that partnership and that relationship so that our folks out here, and that's my role as an extension educators, take evidence-based best practices out to the most rural regions in, in the Panhandle. I've been doing embryology programming and basically we provide eggs and we provide incubators for early childhood providers. And we provide a curriculum. I can come in and help them teach that. I can guide them in the teaching. I can give them, some of them have been doing this for us. I give them the curriculum and, and they do that and they start learning early about, about embryology. Have great activities for young children. This week, our 4H program is kicking off some summer programming for folks that provide summer camps, summer for, for children around our community. So they'll have about 40 kids there on Wednesday with activities that they're going to be doing. And then July 26th, we kick off Scottsbluff County Fair. So they've been working on that for a while. They, we had a couple of weeks to take some vacation and most of us did, and now we're ramping up for the fair.
Can't believe it's fair time already.
Well, the temperature tells me it's fair time.
It's been hot and dry.
Okay, any questions?
Almost time for a chilly cook-off.
Appreciate your report.
All right.
Thank you. Tammy, come on up.
I, we talked about me being at the diversion conference a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that I came back from that, we have a new diversion handbook that the state wants us to follow. One of the things that they reiterated throughout that handbook is to stop charging diversion fees. There is a bill in the legislature that has not passed yet concerning fees and discontinuing charging. Sometimes it's to the detriment of some of the juveniles that we work with. I have waived fees for low-income families. I spoke to Dave about it. He wants me to continue to charge those fees, which is $75, which is actually higher than most counties. Most counties are charging $25. He wants me to continue to charge those fees until that bill passes. So I'm kind of getting it from both sides, the crime commission, NJJA and Dave, but that is in the horizon.
This is a fee that the
Now for.
Youth person pays.
Right. That's a diversion fee that we charge them.
They or their family or whatever.
Right. I always stress to the kiddos that I want them to do extra work. If they have a job, that should come from their funds, not their parents' funds, because the parents didn't get in trouble, they did. However, we charge $75 for 18 and under. Over 18, we charge 150. We can continue to charge 150 because they're considered adults. But the juveniles is the one that NJJ is really hammering on. Also, I believe it's, it'll be 531 or 530 that juveniles 11 and over can now be held in detention. So that's all. So that's also something that the state is really looking at as far as diversion. They want me to take first time, well, they're all first-time offenders usually in diversion. But for minor things, they want me to start giving out warning letters and not putting them on like the three months traditional diversion. Now I have changed my program to instead of $75, 25 hours community service and online class, I have changed that to we are now doing workbooks. We're doing more one-on-one. There still can be some community service. There's always an online class. That, that's what the Crime Commission has wanted us to change to. So I do the NSAT and I get a score for that child or juvenile. And then I base my diversion program off of that score. So we've seen some changes there, but the big thing is recidivism in juveniles. So just so that you're aware that those fees could be coming off relatively soon.
Those fees come to us or come to the general fund is what you said.
Correct. Maybe for a year would be about 5,000. Five to 6,000 is usually what that amounts to.
So are you looking for direction from the board?
I just want you to be aware that that's what's going to happen. It is going to pass eventually. And so Dave wants me to continue charging those fees until it does pass. Whereas the Crime Commission and NJJ is telling me, do not charge those fees. So I'm going to do what my supervisor wants. Do you ever have issues collecting those fees? Yes.
Well, they don't, they don't pass, they don't pass diversion if they don't pay their fees.
I can waive the fees, like I said, in a low-income situation, and I have. But if they don't pay, say they did everything else, but they don't pay the fee, then I release them unsatisfactorily, which means their file doesn't get sealed. So if they come back again, or if they're in court again, then we can bring that as part of like probation or whatever the judge decides. Whereas if they pay the fees and do everything that's asked of them, their file is then sealed.
You mentioned something else that seemed like was becoming more lenient. And what was that again?
For, say we do the NSAT and they scored low or they don't score at all, then we are directed to start giving out warning letters. Say it's an assault. Now I make sure they don't have any background. They don't have other issues that's happening that perhaps it was a bullying issue or perhaps no one got hurt or it wasn't that big of a deal, I'll give a warning letter. Assaults are about the only ones I'll give a morning, a warning letter on. Now, in our diversion meeting, they said if it's a first-time MIP and they've got good grades and they've got this and this and this, then they should have a warning letter. I don't agree with that. I think they should at least take the class. So I'm very picky about my warning letters.
And you have the discretion to do that?
Yes, yes. I may not give them the community service, but they're certainly going to take an online class or have to do an essay on the dangers of binge drinking.
And those recommendations or I guess we'll call them recommendations are coming from the Crime Commission?
And Nebraska Juvenile Justice System.
Tammy, how many times do you, do you have to look at the fees or reduce the fees or?
It's not that often. I mean, you guys are aware, we live in a poverty
Well, that, that was, yeah, that's what I was thinking here.
Now I might waive a $75 fee or I might say, okay, I'll reduce it because I think that that's part of learning responsibility and taking accountability. So I might reduce it to say $50 or $25.
And you have that ability and thought to do all that?
Well, we appreciate you letting us know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Okay, let's see. Lisa, let me make sure that I don't forget you two guys. Do you have anything, Lisa, any further? Okay, go ahead, come on up. And Jason, you'll be next. If you have anything.
I set up budget meetings with y'all.
I've got one.
I've given you all calendar and lights. I was just looking at appointed officials right now, and here's the appointment. And who can be here that day if you want to come to the meeting or have us
Lisa.
So I make sure I'm not getting more than one person. And then we'll start working on meeting with the elected officials right after Robert's protests next week.
What's he protesting about?
What is that? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? And I think I have
Please don't confuse the board. They're the 14, 15, 16, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right?
Yeah.
Are they? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I told you. Let's, I stayed away from those days.
Show up on the right day.
Yeah, because I know you're pretty booked up next week, but I have some Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Questions for me?
Wednesday, what?
Yeah, this, that Wednesday is this Wednesday. This is all this week that you're talking about.
Oh, this, these are this week?
Yeah, and it's just meeting with the appointed officials right now.
And the board?
And the assigned commissioner.
Okay.
And I have a place for an alternate, another person. You didn't have to do anything. I just was, I reached out and I'm just trying to set up some times. Setting up these pre-meetings so that we can at least have a run-through of the budgets. So I understand. Yeah, and then like I said, we wanted to meet with the elected. Posing if I just start telling you all to call, we can start just setting up a day and you you know, you're, it's easy with the appointed. You already, I already know which person is going to be involved. How do I do the elected ones? Set up a day and like I think I put in an email to y'all. I'd like to do the courthouse all at once, one after the other. Just need someone to step up and say they wanted to be part of that, so.
Okay, we, I know we had talked about the assessor's office. That's not set up yet.
That's not set up yet because I needed a time where I had you two together because I had asked Mark and you said you wanted to, you were interested in the assessor and mapping.
And again, that's in that email that you sent out is a lot of this information.
Right. So, and I didn't want to make, make you make multiple trips if I can help it. So I know Robert would like to get it done. So if we have a time on Thursday, maybe that would work. And Brenda was not really available this week, Mark.
Yeah, I talked to her before this meeting and, yeah, this week's not good.
I'm open both Thursday and Friday.
Are you?
So far.
That's where I stand with that. That's anyway, I can't think of any other announcements that are, that I need to share, so.
Okay, thanks. Jason, do you have anything? Okay. So Darla? Nothing? Robert? Okay. Kelly?
Nothing.
All right. We'll do Commissioners. Charlie, I guess we're going to start on your end this time.
Uh, nothing to report today.
Okay. Ken?
I don't have any meetings. Most of them are meetings are, we don't meet in a lot. I just wanted to make one comment. There was an article that was put out. It was in, in the newspaper. I won't go into detail about it, but I do want to thank Monette for at least contacting me so I could refute some of the, most of the incorrect information that was in it, and I, I do appreciate that. And I'm assuming there'll be more coming, but Elise, thanks for the courtesy of calling. I appreciate that.
Anything else? For my things, I would only tell you that Lisa and I attended the regional governance meeting last week at the airport. They did give us, we all gave a pretty extensive report of how the airport's doing. I believe that he told us that pre-COVID, that we were up to 18,000 boardings per, per year. And then it dropped clear down to below 10,000 and now it's gradually coming back. And Russ, you might be able to confirm, but I think he told us that he's up to like 14,000 boardings now. And it's gradually coming up higher and higher as he goes.
10,000 is still the magic number.
Yeah.
Still a magic number.
For the money. Yes, essential air service money. So, so to that extent, there is enough boardings to justify the essential air service. The, also at that meeting, we were handed out an invitation from Melissa Price, who's the media person for the schools. And there is an invitation that was given to attend a school open house at the SWBC building, I call it. They call it now the Scotts Bluff Educational Building or something like that. And so I'll have to get my nomenclature changed around here. But anyway, they're trying to be sure that they're ready to go for their preschool things that are happening up there. And Jackie's probably far more aware of it than I am, but I believe they are talking about potentially more than 200 kids that they're going to be able to have. And these children are between three and five, the way I'm understanding it. And so one of the things I asked and didn't know the answer to was that the, there is a fee for those going unless they qualify for reduced or no fee care based upon their income. But the majority of the people will be paying a fee to have their children there. They're going to be doing some things that go a little later so that parents can pick them up after work and possibly some things just a little bit earlier so they can get dropped off early. But I know that this has been part of a TCD effort as well. I think Charlie, as far as childcare and daycare type things. And anyway, it'll be, they've got a lot of grant money. And of course, now they're going to have brand-new facility basically for all of this and some outdoor playground equipment and some other things. So do you remember the date of that? Is it the 27th, August 27th, maybe?
23rd.
23rd? We'll get that information to you at some point, so you know. But there will be an open house. They want to, they, that open house, they wanted it to be after the kids had already started going there. So it's late August, I know that. All right, the other thing is we do have a tourism meeting that's scheduled for this Wednesday at 1:15. I do want to update you on something that I just heard today, and I think this is public information, that we have had two of the people on the Tourism Committee resign. One was on the Tourism Committee because of her position with the Nebraska Arts Council, I believe. And she's no longer the appointed official to that position. And so she felt she should resign. And then we have another one that in my opinion was representing kind of the gearing motel people. And she had some family personal issues and causing her to resign. So we will be looking to fulfill those positions. And I know the Tourism Committee will be talking about those positions on Wednesday and exactly how those are going to be filled. Kelly, I wanted to remind you that we need to have our jail tour, I think, at our next meeting. We need to have it in this month. And I'll remind the Commissioners, yeah, that that one may be a little longer than what we've had in the past. So I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Okay, I had the 9/11 Factory Board meeting last, the 1st of July. Then last Saturday, I went down to Bridgeport and attended their Moore County Veteran Park Flag Dedication that the Lacy family provided funding for a flag display down there and I was asked to come down. I'll be attending the Medal of Honor Highway Sign Dedication Thursday up on the Wyoming border on Highway 20. I'll be representing a Medal of Honor family. I was at the original one a few years ago. And then I'm in the early stages of working with COAD, which is the civilian organizations assisting in disasters. I'll be recruiting and training trauma and disaster chaplains and pastors for the COAD group to be available for disasters. I've been asked to do that for quite some time. It's just finally get to the point where I can get it done. So that's my project for next year.
Okay. Russ?
Okay, we, well, Road and Bridge was completed six miles on Highland Road and Stonegate Road South from Highland. And earlier, they finished two miles on Stiegel. That's all it's completed. They did a really, Simons did the work and Timon, it's a very nice job. They have, we're looking at 12 more miles in August, which will be Sugar Factory and Liberty Oil. And those two are going to be chip sealed. And let's see, so we did the Medal of Honor. Sugar Factory, Russ, what, what section of the Sugar Factory? Well, the, you know, the one that they did. The new one? The new one, yeah, that's, that's six years old, I think. So it needs a chip seal to preserve that because we're starting to get some, starting to get some pockets and, and some cracking and it's going to need to seal that from going bad. That road will last a long time. We get chip seal on it. I was going to talk to you about Wednesday, we meet Road and Bridge and Steve Kurt, but at least I won't even tell you about it. And these roads could sure use some oyster. So if you guys think about it during church Sunday, we could sure use some rain.
I do have one other one I
Okay, go ahead.
We did, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm
We did meet with the actions, union negotiations. Just passed along some numbers. There weren't any decisions made or anything. We'll be getting a final of that hopefully.
Okay. I might mention something. I heard that the city of Scotts Bluff was going to do some work on the, on 42nd Street from the city limits, eastern city limits to the western city limits. And I'm assuming that they're not doing anything on the, on the newer paved portion, but maybe resurfacing the asphalt portions of that. Of course, it's going to leave, the one part that I'm real familiar with is the, I think it's about a half a mile that the county still takes care of on the eastern end.
Cemetery to
Actually, I think they, they'll take care of the first half mile, I believe. And I believe our responsibility would be the second half mile.
So do you know if they're going to do a mill and overlay or are they going to do a chip seal?
I don't know for sure, but because they're going to be there, I'm just wondering if at least Steve or you and Steve can maybe see what they're doing. And it might be of interest.
I don't know who the new city foreman is now. You know, Mark Bowles retired from that position. I saw Mark on Sunday and I don't even know who's replaced him now.
They said Millen Overlay, I'm going to get the story. It was during the last city council, Millen Overlay and Doug Gompert.
The new
Who is it? Doug Gompert.
All right. So, I think that includes part of the road again on the eastern end and the western end. And so, how much exactly, I'm not sure. I believe the city limits to the west goes out to where, oh, where Clark Brifford's house was. And then, so, just be aware of that, I guess.
So, what is it, we have any money to do a half a mile of Millen Overlay?
I know. If we tied it in with something that they were doing, I thought maybe it would be a little less expensive than, but anyway, just be aware of it. You do with it whatever you want.
We did that once before on some, I don't know whether it was repair work or something. Mark had kind of included it with it for whatever reason. Mark was pretty good about that. But it's been quite a while ago. I don't Well, maybe Doug or Steve and I could go meet with Doug. I think it was right after when they, when they decided that we were going to take care of it. They were doing something, but I don't recall what it was. We would meet with him, and then one, either Steve or I could report back on that.
That'd be great, if you would be aware of that. All right, so Charlie, the other thing was legislation. Did you have anything on that?
There's no special session this year, so no updates since they adjourned any day.
Okay.
I don't know if we talked about the April capacity tax change. We talked about it the last meeting. I brought it up today.
Okay. Is there anything else? Hearing none? Meeting's adjourned.
I want you to start calling the halfway market five-thirty more often.
That was better.
Not bad.